Okay, it's now 6:00 p.m. We'll call our meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mrs. Rayel?
Here.
Mr. Krings?
Here.
Mr. Bembal?
Here.
First item tonight is the approval of the minutes.
I would make a motion to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes in May 11.
Second.
You have a motion, a second, to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes in May 11. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Do we have any comments from citizens and delegations?
None.
Okay, thank you. I went to committee reports. We'll start with the Educational Services Committee. The first item is the school calendar.
Yeah, and so what you see is a request for action on the 21-22 school calendar, so that's not for next year. It's the year after. And the modification is fairly self-explanatory. It's a shift around the November Thanksgiving holiday. And then also that shift that we already had talked about for a modification for next year, for Martin Luther King Day, moving to January 31st In-Service Day and January 17th. And that's it. Those were the two modifications recommended. And fairly self-explanatory. Nothing super complicated.
I'd make a motion to recommend approval to reschedule the November 2021 Professional Development Recordkeeping Day from November 29, 2021, to November 24, 2021, and the January Professional Development Day from January 31, 2022, to January 17, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve rescheduling the November 2021 Professional Development Recordkeeping Day from November 29, 2021, to November 24, 2021, and the January Professional Development Day from January 31, 2022, to January 17, 2022. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next item, the Carl Perkins Grant.
Yeah, and that also is status quo. That is an annual grant that is applied for and received, which supports our CTE programming district-wide, largely concentrated at Lincoln High School. And the grant amount is $41,076.
I'd make a motion to approve the Carl Perkins Grant for the 2020-21 school year and the amount of $41,076.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the Carl Perkins Grant for the 2020-21 school year and the amount of $41,076. Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mr. Bembal?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Okay. Last item then is the Department of Workforce Development Career and Tech Incentive Grant.
Yeah, and that also has been, well, it's relatively new, but that has been an annual grant as a result of students participating in our various career and technical programs. And it is reimbursement for said student participation, as is outlined.
I'd make a motion for the approval of the Department of Workforce Development Career and Technical Incentive Grants Funds in the amount of $54,000.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the Department of Workforce Development Career and Technical Incentive Grant Funds in the amount of $54,000. Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Bembal?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
And under updates, we got a CSO 6 Smart Thinking Foundation Micro Grant.
Yeah, and as the background tells you, that will be spent primarily to provide training for ELL staff on what's called Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol, SIOP model. And basically, it's given a shot to a new approach with our English language learners. And that information will be tracked and recorded and determine whether or not it's effective. So, something new.
If that's all we have for Ed Services, we can move on to Business Services. First item, approve the proposal from Eagle Construction for renovation of Mead Kitchen.
Yeah, the bulk of these dollars are slated to come from Fund 50. This has been part of food service staff, Lizzie's and Ed's plan for, from what I understand, the last handful of years, which is a renovation and update to the Mead Elementary School Kitchen. There's a number of things that will be addressed through this project, including, there's a freezer that has some kind of an issue that will be rectified through this and a couple of other things with regard to just the setup and the flow of how kids are in and out of that. If you're familiar with Mead Elementary School, it's pretty much in one door to the large cafeteria and then out the other. And some of that will be modified to have a little bit better opportunity to serve kids and be a little bit more, let's call it, you know, suitable for this day and age rather than the old style, throw stuff on a tray and hand it to kids as they walk through. So, I know that Lizzie had some significant concerns based on our circumstances with COVID-19 and the closure and possible budget issues about whether or not this would move forward. And because of the need, the need is pretty significant to have addressed. And I would argue that the dollars of Fund 50 are there, which might put Fund 50 in a circumstance that we have to make whole at some point in the future. Doesn't look like out of next year's budget necessarily, but as things roll forward, if there is something that would require repair or replacement that wasn't planned or foreseen. But as you guys know, our Fund 50 does well. And we'll fund it from Fund 50 in the future. If there are needs, then some Fund $10 may have to be transitioned over. But again, I don't anticipate that happening for next year. Now, if COVID-19 continues and we're not serving kids the way we normally would with Alcart and some of the other options that we have that generate a little bit of revenue for Fund 50, that might be a different circumstance. But as it stands, if this goes forward and we have a fairly normal school year next year, I don't believe we're going to have any Fund 50 issues, so.
Plus, we can't let Fund 50 gather money either.
That's correct. Yeah. And the recommendation is simply for the lowest bid of the five that you see there with $191,945.
I'd make a motion to approve the proposal from Eagle Construction Company Incorporated for renovation of the Mead Elementary School Kitchen for a total cost of $191,945 to be funded from the building and grounds budget and just the Fund 50.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the proposal from Eagle Construction Company for the renovation of the Mead Elementary School Kitchen for a total cost of $191,945 to be funded from the building and grounds budget and Fund 50. Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Bembal?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Next item, CSO 5 Rental Vesper Building Approval.
So, if you recall, we developed a relationship with CSO 5 to lease the Vesper Elementary School building and lease a portion of that last year, this past school year, pardon me, we're still in it technically. And what the rental agreement or the renewal is basically the identical terms to what it is. This year, just cast forward into the next year.
What portion? How much of the building are they using?
It's like, it ends up, they're really using like a third potentially. But I think based on their activities, it bumps into other areas on occasion. And they're not using, it's around 10 students. So clearly, it's not, you know, a full building sort of use scenario. But it allows for separation of students. It allows for the use of the gym and library area. So, it's tough to give you that number. I mean, they wouldn't need the space that they do use, but we have, you know, ample space out there. And there's really no reason that they can't use spaces that are open. We still use part of Vesper for storage of some buildings and grounds materials that, you know, we can't have elsewhere. And it's, again, it's a use for an old elementary building on Vesper that wouldn't get any use either way. Yep, so.
I'd make a motion to approve the 2020-21 lease agreement with CSO 5 for rental of the Vesper Building.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the 2020-21 lease agreement with CSO 5 for rental of the Vesper Building. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next item, we got asbestos abatement in the floor at Grove and Grant.
Yeah, there's two projects, as outlined there. Grant, pardon me, Grove, the bulk of the projects at a cost of $13,400. I think that's six classrooms. I think I read that. I can't find it on my, and then a little bit of work at Grant. This is part of our ongoing plan to remediate asbestos in buildings. And when the tile, which is the cause of the asbestos, the tile and the mastic, when that gets to a point where it needs to be replaced, you have no other choice but to do a abatement first.
So, when this is done, both of those buildings will be free of asbestos?
I do not know that for sure, Sandy, but I can double check with Ed and get you the answer for that question.
You know, it says the last six rooms and the last two rooms.
Yeah, I think it is, last, those buildings.
Yep.
From our previous meetings.
Okay.
With that, I would move to approve of the proposal for abatement of the asbestos floor tile in six rooms at Grove Elementary and two rooms at Grant Elementary at a total cost of $15,000 to be funded from the building and grounds budget.
A motion, a second, to approve the proposal for abatement of the asbestos floor tile in six rooms at Grove Elementary School and two rooms at Grant Elementary at a total cost of $15,000 to be funded from the building and grounds budget. Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Bembal?
Yes.
Okay, next item, district-wide license of Lucid Charts and Lucid Press.
Yeah, and as you can see through the background there, Phil and the Library of Media Specialist, well, the Technology Department and the Library of Media Specialist staff had some conversations around this new tool, Lucid Press slash Lucid Chart. And I'm not going to tell you that I even have seen it in operation, but from what I gather and speaking with Phil, it has a greater ability for people to create and provide virtual solutions for kids that we didn't have in the past. In addition, it'd be funded through the Common School Fund budget, which in some cases is tough to, well, I shouldn't say tough, but your Common School Fund budget expenditures are limited to certain types of things. Technology and programs and things of that nature are on that list. And they did their research and believed that this would get a lot of use from elementary staff in particular. As part of the COVID closing too, I would say that elementary area delivery of virtual instruction and other creative means to deliver instruction is probably an area we need to polish up on. And you're going to see some potential additional purchases in the future to help facilitate that for something like an online platform like Seesaw as an example. So that's also being evaluated here over the summertime. In the event that we have to continue with virtual instruction, staff, elementary staff would like to see, let's call it a universal or a K5 virtual approach or a platform similar to Google Classroom or to Canvas that they use at Lincoln High School.
I'd make a motion to approve a district-wide license of Lucid Charts and Lucid Press from Lucid Incorporated at a cost of $10,200 to be funded from the 2020-2021 Common School Fund budget.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve a district-wide license of Lucid Charts and Lucid Press from Lucid Incorporated at a cost of $10,200 to be funded from the 2020-2021 Common School Fund budget. Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mr. Bembal?
Yes.
Okay, and the last item is the Gaggle Safety Management Renewal.
Yeah, and that is a renewal. For those of you that recall, this is, you see this annually. And what it is, is the monitoring software that supports the Google Suite. So, think Google Docs, Google Slides, all things Google, including email. And that is what notifies administration with regard to questionable topics that a kid may be putting in there. And then Phil gets notified. Phil notifies the administrator responsible for said student, and then we follow up. It is monitored, pardon me, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And so, I can't even tell you the number of times it has come in and with regard to us getting a notification and then some kind of intervention taking place after that notification comes through.
I'd make a motion to approve of the Gaggle Safety Management Suite for Google and Google Drive backup for staff from Gaggle at a cost of $27,900 to be funded from the 2020-2021 technology budget.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the Gaggle Safety Management Suite for Google and Google Drive backup for staff from Gaggle at a cost of $27,900 to be funded from the 2020-2021 technology budget. Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Bembal?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen. Under updates, it looks like we've got some purchase updates. And John's favorite, the copy paper. And Blair Walk meeting.
Which probably isn't in much demand there.
I have a question. When it comes to our fee slayers on officers, is there a quarter that we won't be paying for this year? Or because I would assume they haven't been in the building most of March, April, and May?
You know what, Sandy? I don't know the answer to that question. And I'd have to follow up with the business office to see if we had a invoice for the final three months of the school year. Because I don't know. I'll find out and I will let you know.
Okay.
Move on to Personnel Services. First item, professional staff appointments. Going up the roster, it looks like, right?
That is correct. Oh, one of the pieces of note would be the speech and language pathologist, which is the second one listed there, Kayla Copax. That would be an additional speech and language pathologist. If you recall, we talked about that, I think it was last month, about that need. I shared with you some numbers, so we were able to lock down a speech and language. And the remainder are replacements of people that have resigned or retired.
I'd make a motion to approve the professional staff appointments of Christine Scott, Kayla Copax, Jacob Jensen, and Laura Reichert effective with the 2020-21 school year.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the professional staff appointments of Christine Scott, Kayla Copax, Jacob Jensen, and Laura Reichert effective with the 2020-21 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We have support staff appointments.
Similar there, that's nothing, those are not new positions. Those are filling vacant positions.
I'd make a motion to approve the support staff appointments of Cindy Olafman and Amy Grant effective with the 2021 school year.
Second.
Amanda Grant.
Oh, I'm sorry, Amanda Grant.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the support staff appointments of Cindy Olafman and Amanda Grant effective with the 2020-21 school year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next, we have professional staff appointment for summer school coordinator.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2020 summer school professional staff appointment of Stephanie Treba.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the professional staff appointment of Stephanie Treba to the summer school site coordinator position, effective July 6, 2020, contingent upon summer school not getting canceled.
Yep, and we talked about that last month as well.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Number four, summer support staff appointments.
I'd make a motion to approve the 2020 summer staff support, support, summer support staff appointments of August Benvenic, Emma Mishnick, Justin Abrams, Mutau, Caleb Cromenacher, and Chaney Polchinsky.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the 2020 summer support staff appointments of August Benvenic, Emma Mishnick, Justin Abraham, Mutau, Caleb Cromenacher, and Chaney Polchinsky. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Youth apprenticeship support staff appointments is the next item.
Yeah, a brief background on that topic was that you probably know that we have a handful of youth apprenticeship jobs that are out there. One of them's here in the district office doing copies and some miscellaneous clerical work. One of them is the student webmaster. We recently added the Lincoln High School Repair Tech. Yeah, those are the two that you see here before you. And then we're talking about the potential of bringing one on for the youth apprenticeship working with our Buildings and Grounds Department. So, as those names come forward, they'll be brought for approval. In talking with Brian and Maureen, I don't know that we were making in the past this regular course of action by bringing youth apprenticeships up for board approval or at least recognition. And so, what we're doing is, we'll have you see those names. And the reason why I wanted them to be brought forward was not because these are lucrative, high-dollar positions. I mean, the people we're paying, we're paying them, you know, fairly low dollar-per-hour rate in the scheme of things, nine or $10 an hour. But on the same hand, they're our kids. And they're doing youth apprenticeship that gets them credit for a number of things, gets us reimbursement in the form of the youth apprenticeship grant that you, you know, heard about already this evening too. And it's cool. Similar to having, you know, our Project Search student that got a job in Lincoln High School, bringing in and ensuring that you know what the youth apprenticeship positions are, who the kids are each year as they come through. So that's really the process behind that. And if we're going to add a new position, then of course you'd be in the loop around another apprenticeship opportunity being offered to our kids, so.
I'd make a motion to approve the youth apprenticeship support staff appointments effective with the 2020-21 school year of Colin Kozlowski and August Benvenic.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the youth apprenticeship support staff appointments effective with the 2020-21 school year of Colin Kozlowski and August Benvenic. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Number six, professional staff resignation requests.
There's a couple of there for you. Nothing out of the ordinary. I don't have any specific details or background necessarily on what the rationale for the resignation requests were, but you can tell both of those people were relatively new hires. And I apologize for being on my phone, but what I ended up doing was, at the end of this, there's a staffing update and I realized I forgot to print it priorly for the building homes tour, so I pulled it up on my phone so I could actually read it to you.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve the professional staff resignation request of Karen Salzwedel and Robert Cummings effective June 8, 2020.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the professional staff resignation request of Karen Salzwedel and Robert Cummings effective June 8, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Support staff resignation requests, next.
I'd just make a motion to approve the support staff resignation request of Jay Johnson and Christine Novy effective June 5, 2020.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve the support staff resignation request of Jay Johnson and Christine Novy effective June 5, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next item, 2020-21 pupil open enrollment application.
So, you can see the historical data as well as the 2021 data there before you. Very little has changed over time between last year and this year. We are up six kids though, in, which is positive. And the transfer out stays at 82. Remember that you took action to modify those open enrollment timelines as a result of the COVID-19. And you'll see additional open enrollment data as months progress here as well. So, nothing out of the ordinary, really.
I would make a motion to approve of all 2020-21 pupil open enrollment applications under the Open Enrollment Law, pending a review of discipline records and special services needs.
Second.
A motion, a second, to approve all 2020-21 pupil open enrollment applications under the Open Enrollment Law, pending a review of discipline records and special services needs. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Number nine, approval of a one-time stipend for additional Athletic Department Secretary responsibilities.
Yeah, so this was talked about quite a while ago, I think, in Personnel Services. But you guys are all aware that we had our athletic director resign. I want to say it was December. It was in the wintertime. And Betsy Boersky, who is the current Athletic Secretary, stepped up to fill that void and did, took on, let's say, additional responsibilities as she worked with Bill Vicroy and Patty Ritchie, who Patty officially served as interim athletic director, and took up some of those additional duties. And although she did put down her time and hours that she spent, there were things that were a little bit more than what an hourly secretarial expectation would be over the course of this second half of the year. And she did fill that void. As a result, we thought it appropriate to request a one-time stipend for Betsy at $2,000 for that work that she had.
She was, she also did what, some PAC?
She did a PAC.
Some PAC things?
Yes. PAC coordination has been transitioned away from her and over to that new position that was implemented not too long ago.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, she's largely athletics now. Lincoln High School scheduling, facility scheduling, pardon me, and Athletic Secretary.
Okay. I mean, so the stipend's covering what period? Because I would assume nothing's happened in March, April, May, and June?
Well, oddly enough, quite a bit has happened still. Although we're not running athletics, it covers from December, even if it was from December until March. But it's been December until today, to be honest with you. But what ends up happening is, although the spring sports were stalled, the Athletic Department is still working on the development of schedules, coordinating officials, workers, and so forth for the fall of next year and even into the winter of next year. So, although there wasn't events to participate or to get ready for and that kind of responsibility, there was still some significant responsibilities. And keep in mind, it's only, it's now been a long period of time. But from the middle of March until, you know, the end of May is really what we were talking about with regard to school sports. So, her time, the bulk of her time during this closure period wouldn't be as much as what we're talking about the time when we were running full-on winter sports and so forth and so on. So, give or take, there was extra responsibilities without question. During this time, I think there would be a little bit less than if we were operating sports. Yeah.
I guess, you know, I think a lot of people within our district have stepped up at this period of time and had done more than they normally do. Would that not be a correct statement? That we've had a lot of people step up and carry more of the ball than they're used to?
Yeah, I would agree. But I mean, so like if we had, if Ron Rasmussen, for example, resigned mid-year and we had no ability to, you know, hire a principal, then we would ask additional people to take up some of that responsibility. Myself, Chris Weefal, the secretary, probably some Lincoln High School office staff. And it would not be the same as if there was an administrator or a manager or director that was in that position to, you know, take care of some of those things. So, Betsy really did some things because she also was here more frequently than either Bill or Patty were as well. Because it wasn't as though they were five-day-a-week, full-time employees that were brought on. They were brought on just to ensure that we had some continuity and that we were, we were able to play out. I haven't run the numbers with regard to what we would have spent and what we did spend, but I can almost guarantee the number is going to be the same or less than if we were paying an athletic director for the rest of the year, even with our interim stepping in and Betsy doing a little extra as well. So.
I'd make a motion to approve a one-time stipend of $2,000 to Betsy Boersky for the additional Athletic Department Secretary responsibilities during the 2019-20 school year.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve a one-time stipend of $2,000 to Betsy Boersky for additional Athletic Department Secretary responsibilities during the 2019-2020 school year. Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mr. Bembal?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayel?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
No.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Okay, and the next item, one-time stipend to Chris Feith for athletic director duties for the month of June.
Yeah, so the number you see, well, actually, you don't see a number there, but the number we're requesting is $1,943.20. That is five days of what his contract is. That would be applied here in the month of June. He does not officially start until July. The question would be, why are we doing that? Number one, he's willing to do it. Number two, he's doing it anyway without that compensation. But as we transition here, Patty has expressed her interest to be done at the end of May. She has in fact been racked up and done. And Bill, I think, is of similar thought processes. These five days are largely around getting things prepared and set and ready for next school year in addition to fall sports, you know, getting up and running. And so, it's, it would be five days at his salary that wouldn't start till effective July 1. That's where that number is derived from. And I would argue the five days would be used during the month of June. It's not like he's just going to come in one week and just be a day or two here or there as a kind of a transition and segue to get us to July 1.
How much did you say it was?
$1,943.20. Yeah, it is on your motion sheet, but it wasn't on the agenda.
And I would make a motion to approve a one-time stipend of $1,943.20 to Chris Feid for athletic director duties for the month of June 2020.
Second.
I have a motion is second to approve a one-time stipend of $1,943.20 to Chris Feid for athletic director duties for the month of June 2020. We have a call, please, Maureen.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Bambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayall?
Yes.
Mr. Bambo?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Bambo?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayall?
Yes.
Mr. Bambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayall?
Yes.
Mr. Bambo?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Crings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Bambo?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Okay, Maureen, move into New Business. Item A, resignation retirement request.
Yep, there's one resignation on a separate sheet for you. That is, as I've just mentioned, Dave Schlies from Rams, hired in '98 and choosing to resign here this summer. And that position is posted and will hopefully be filled.
I would make a motion to approve the professional staff resignation request of David Schlies effective June 8, 2020. Second.
I have a motion is second to approve the administration's recommendation of the professional staff resignation request of David Schlies effective June 8, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, next item, approved recommended updates to the tenure facility plan.
Yeah, and I commented on this in my background information to you. So one of the things we're going to talk about here is item E under New Business, which really is the driving force behind this change, this request for the addition. And what we're talking about is the adding of the Lincoln High School Topographic Survey for Athletic Upgrade Planning, 434. If you recall, that was an approved expenditure from an earlier board meeting. $25,000 of that is legacy grant dollars, but nonetheless, that's the price tag. Why is it being added to the tenure facility plan? It was not on there. In order to use Fund $46, it needs to be on your tenure facility plan. It is absolutely part of our facilities. It's absolutely applicable. The question might be, why are we flipping that over to be spent from Fund $46 rather than Fund $10? The rationale behind that is to offset what is sure to be a tough budget year next year for our school district and many others, because we can use Fund $46, which is at a balance of $1.9 million, and then not have to spend those dollars on Fund $10. As we move through next year, this would be out of this year's budget. But as we move through next year, those dollars that are in Fund $46 can and will no doubt be utilized to help offset potential, it's not budget issues because we have the dollars in Fund $46, but had we not, we would have issues with our Fund $10. And so Fund $46 will be used to do, dollars will be spent out of Fund $46 for building and facility projects, which in the past, if we didn't have Fund $46, would be Fund $10, which is what the whole purpose of Fund $46 is. But frankly, the timing could not be better, because as you'll hear about a little bit more in item E, the idea that we receive an increase in next year's budget is now a foregone conclusion that we will not. I'll talk about what the budget scenarios are at that time. But really, any dollars that we can transition from Fund $10 to Fund $46 with regard to our facilities projects and things that we have going is going to make all kinds of sense for the next budget cycle without question, and potentially after that as well. So that's why that was added. In addition, what was added is the information district-wide, which has to do with network infrastructure and IT equipment. That was already on there. You're going to hear some of that this evening as well in item C. And then a telephone system upgrade is what was also listed under Fund $46. That and this server upgrade that you're acting on, the request to be acted on this evening, are two items that are in fairly, I'm not going to call it dire need, but it's areas that we can continue to put off. And Fund $46, using those dollars via Fund $46, will help alleviate some of that budget pressure for next year. Because again, it's there and available, and then it would not have to be spent on a Fund $10.
Okay. I have a question on renovation of the fab lab at $20,000.
Yep.
Didn't we get a $25,000 Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation fab lab grant? Wouldn't that take care of that?
Well, and that was, the requirement was a matching contribution.
Oh.
Yep. And I'm guessing that's why that number was, was 20 instead of 45. Because we came, the district contributed dollars towards that project as well. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty confident it was a matching, you get these dollars as long as you spend as much or a little bit more.
Okay.
It was. It came through business practices.
I'd make a motion to approve the recommended updates to the district tenure facility plan. Second.
I have a motion is second to approve the recommended updates to the district tenure facility plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
When you look at the plan before this, we had some stuff on the July 1, 2019 that was bold. I was just comparing the two plans from a year.
Okay.
So what did something that was bold mean, like painting various rooms, five rooms at 350 a room? If it's bold, we had to do it, or I don't understand why these are presented differently.
I am not 100% sure, Sandy.
Did Dan put this together, then?
This information is gotten from Ed Billings Grounds. Do you recall, Maureen, why some were molded in the past?
Yeah, I just, I guess, can I just see? Like, you know, if you were...
Also, we have asterisks with painting.
The painting one was that there was some question about whether teachers could paint rooms and/or the church group would come in and do that.
I could not tell you. I'm not positive unless it had to do with...
But it's, you know, it's different schools, too, like Grove. I just, I don't understand the difference between the two tenure plans. So maybe Ed can explain that next month or something?
Sure.
And I apologize, I was looking at the wrong sheet. We skipped over the agenda referrals and the legislative agenda, so go back to that now. Does anybody have any agenda referrals or information requests? Okay, legislative agenda. Troy, do you have anything this month?
Yeah, so this month, it's relatively quieter legislatively speaking in our state capital, but we do have some things to look at happening in Washington, DC. The first thing I'm going to start with is the Wisconsin. It's the stateside. The Wisconsin Department of Justice, their Office of School Safety, has recently launched Speak Up and Speak Out. It's a resource center created to provide communities with a centralized safety tool, and this is available at no cost to schools. The Speak Up/Speak Out is a one-stop resource for three areas: threat assessment, consultation, critical incident response, and general school safety guidance. And this, this here is, I'll follow with a quote from the Department of Justice, Office of School Safety. "The Speak Up/Speak Out 24/7 Threat Reporting System will launch in fall 2020. When Wisconsin youth think there's a threat to themselves, their classmates, or their school, the threat reporting system will be a single statewide resource to voice these concerns with complete confidentiality, and they can trust that adults are ready to respond to the threat. No one knows more about what's going on at schools than our students, and they'll be able to inform an adult online via an app or calling a tip line." So this, this will launch this fall, the Speak Up/Speak Out. Now turning to happenings in Washington, DC. Last week, the CDC published guidelines for reopening the economy, including schools and childcare centers. They rolled out a 62-page document titled "CDC Activities and Initiatives Supporting the COVID Response and the President's Plan for Opening America Up Again." The CDC advised that all decisions about following these recommendations should be made in collaboration with your local health officials and other state and local authorities, who can help assess based on the levels of COVID transmission and the capacities of the local public health and healthcare systems, looking at other relevant factors as well. Specifically in the report, the specific recommendations regarding schools begin at page 42, and guidelines for childcare programs begin at page 38, if you want to reference that full report. Next, the U.S. Department of Agriculture extended three nationwide waivers for schools and local nutrition programs to make it easier to feed eligible children through this August 31. The initial waivers were set to expire June 30, but the Food and Nutrition Service waivers were enacted and provide the following flexibility. Food and nutrition service is allowing meals to be served to children outside of the normally required group setting to support social distancing practices. Food and nutrition service is allowing parents and guardians to pick up meals and bring them home to their children. And the third, food and nutrition service is waiving requirements that meals be served at certain standard times, thus allowing for grab-and-go options. This will allow for multiple days' worth of meals to be provided at one time. And the USDA said it is working quickly to approve states for pandemic EBT, which provides food purchasing benefits equal to the value of school meals to households with children who would otherwise be receiving free or reduced-priced meals at schools. So that is all coming from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Also looking, also happening in the federal government, Congress appears to be moving toward another emergency supplemental bill with relief for state and local governments and schools. With state and local governments facing revenue losses, Congress on May 15 passed a fourth emergency supplemental appropriations bill. This 1,800-page Democratic-backed bill, officially known as HR 6800, would provide $3 trillion to help states, communities, and individuals. This bill is dubbed the HEROES Act, and it would provide the following funding. The HEROES Act would provide $1 trillion to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments, $90 billion for the state fiscal stabilization fund, for grants to states to support statewide and local funding for elementary and secondary schools, and public post-secondary institutions. Approximately $58 billion of the 90 total would be provided to K-12 education. $1.5 billion would be set for funding the E-Rate program for schools and libraries to provide internet service to students and teachers, prioritizing those without internet access in their homes. $3 trillion would be set for meal, school meal providers, and USDA's Child and Adult Care Food Program. And this bill would also double the deduction for certain unreimbursed, out-of-pocket expenses for elementary and secondary school teachers, raising that amount from 250 to 500. And this amount would be adjusted for inflation in the future coming years. Wisconsin's House delegation split along party lines at the vote. All Democrats voted in favor and all Republicans voted against. Initial response to the House bill and U.S. Senate was also split along party lines. But Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell was blunt in his response, saying the Republican-controlled Senate would not consider the HEROES Act. McConnell and other key Senate Republicans said they would not develop other emergency response legislation until the CARES Act had had more time to work. But most recently, in the coming weeks, Mitch McConnell softened his stance a little bit. He told reporters the other day that Congress will probably have to pass another relief bill, and will decide in the coming weeks whether to do so. He suggests he could limit, he could support limited relief for state and local governments, but wants liability protections for doctors and businesses in the bill, and wants any additional relief for state and local governments to be narrowly tailored to increased expenses and revenue losses due to the public health emergency. Both the House and Senate have a relatively lighter schedule in the coming weeks, with significant work starting to begin, but will more likely take us into late June. So WASP is urging that that allows for a window, opens a window for school leaders to reach out and communicate with our states' two U.S. senators in terms of a response, how they would support this. Next, applications for federally funded childcare provider grants are now open. The Department of Children and Families announced applications are open for this federally funded program, which will provide $51 million in assistance to a childcare industry deemed essential during the COVID-19 pandemic. The Child Care Counts Emergency Payment Program is broken into three smaller programs targeted at the most common circumstances early care and education providers are facing in the wake of this pandemic. The individual payments are detailed below and cover four periods ending through July 10. Providers are encouraged to apply during all phases of this program and can do so on the Department of Children and Families website. Next, looking at some election news, State Senator David Craig announced he will not seek reelection to the State Senate. That makes him the eighth member of the 33-member chamber in the State Senate that will not be back next session. Four Democrats and four Republicans have not filed papers to run again. The GOP currently holds a majority with an 18-13 margin. That is taking into account two vacancies. Senator Craig joins other colleagues for a various number of reasons in not running again. Majority Leader Scott Fitzgerald is running for Congress. Minority Leader Jennifer Schilling recently resigned, and that is a vacant seat until January. The one most, most impacting education policy, Luther Olson, he chairs the Education Committee. He is retiring. Senator Tom Tiffany was recently elected to Congress, which left a vacant seat open. And Mark Miller, Fred Reiser, and David Hanson are retiring, creating open seats. A little bit early, but there are two candidates announced for the open state superintendent race next, next year. The first to announce a little over a month ago was Jill Underlee. She is a superintendent for a rural district in southern Wisconsin, and she was formerly an assistant director at DPI. Just recently, within the past week, with the second candidate, Sheila Briggs, works at DPI. She is an assistant school superintendent, working under our current superintendent and during Tony Evers' tenure as well, when he was in that role. So I'd be shocked if it, usually in open race, we see a lot of interest. So I can imagine there's, down the pipeline, a February primary that would, would result out of this. But other than that, things have been relatively quiet in Madison with Washington, DC taking most of the action recently.
Thank you for your report, Troy. Okay, we can move back to item C under New Business, discussion and possible action to improve a data center infrastructure upgrade.
Yeah, so Phil and his folks provided you that separate handout in your packet of information called Technology Background Information, specifically data center infrastructure refresh and upgrade. And what that has to do with is the fact that our current data center infrastructure is approaching six years old, as is indicated there. And with the increase in one-to-one, the increased use of video, not only for instructional purposes, but also for surveillance purposes, and the number of things that we have going here in 2020 with regard to just our general technological infrastructure, it's time for an upgrade of that system. So for both age and for computing power, Phil and his folks got together and provided this proposal as a viable option to suit the district for the next five or six-year period with regard to replacing and updating. Discussion and Possible Action to Improve a Data Center Infrastructure Upgrade.
Yeah, so, um, Phil and his folks provided you that, uh, separate handout in your packet of information called Technology Background Information, uh, specifically data center infrastructure refresh and upgrade. And what that has to do with is the fact that our current data center infrastructure is approaching six years old, as is indicated there. And with the increase in, um, one-to-one, uh, the increased use of video, not only for instructional purposes, but also for, um, surveillance purposes, uh, and the number of things that we have going here in 2020 with regard to, uh, just our general technological infrastructure, it's time for an upgrade of that system, uh, so for both age and for computing power. Phil and his folks got together, uh, and, uh, provided this proposal as a viable option to, uh, suit the district for the next five or six-year period with regard to, um, replacing and updating the servers. Um, it also includes a disaster recovery site that is, uh, out at Rudolph Elementary. So it's clearly off-site, and that has, uh, redundant backup for all of the things that we've got going here. The best I can say is to, to tell you that if this is not updated and we have problems, we're going to have significant problems. So it's not just like, oh, I can't get to this website, or I can't start my computer. It's, we don't have anything. We don't have, you know, data backup. We don't have access to the internet. This is like the brains of the school district. And I recognize the, the price tag is not, uh, you know, something that we're entertaining by spending, but frankly, in 2020, we really don't have a lot of options with regard to, uh, the virtual environment. And I think the last two and a half or three months have taught us it is, thank God we have the infrastructure that we do. And, uh, so moving forward, that's the proposal, is to get that data center updated. Um, if you read through Phil's background information, one of the questions I always have in the back of my mind is, is this enough? I mean, is it good enough to get us through for another five or six years? Um, he does allude to the fact that, um, it's going to give us about three times, uh, the additional storage and so forth that we had. And running just quick mathematical calculation, it's over one and a half times, uh, uh, well, pardon me, three times the processing power and over one and a half times the, uh, the storage, um, that we have, so.
Plus, it shouldn't last us the next five years.
Yes, yes, yep.
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the proposed HP Nimble Storage Array, three HPDL 360 servers, the HP Store Ones Backup Repository, and installation from PDS at a total cost of $95,463.03 to be funded through Fund 46 in accordance with the 10-year district facility plan.
Second.
A motion, a second to approve the purchase of the proposed HP Nimble Storage Array, three HPDL 360 servers, the HP Store Ones Backup Repository, and installation from PDS at a total cost of $95,463.03 to be funded through Fund 46 in accordance with the district tenure facility plan. Do you have a roll call, please, Murray?
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayal?
Yes.
Thank you, Ray. Uh, next.
I did have one question. I know we had a discussion, did we, uh, we called for your approval before the COVID, and then we talked about the phone system. Is that still coming, or is that?
Yeah, that's in process. In fact, Phil has some phones down in the technology conference center to be.
Did I know we were almost to the point where there were several multiple ones that weren't even working anymore?
That's accurate. The other piece too is, and, and I'd be lying if I told you I know why this is, but one of the limiting factors for our bandwidth, uh, is our phones. Because apparently there's only so much that can flow, and they're tied into the same, uh, infrastructure. And your phone can limit the access that your computer has because of the, because of the iteration it is.
Where they have to network them.
Yes. So, uh, one of the factors that limits our bandwidth and our ability to provide reliable and, and, you know, high-speed internet and so forth like we can is the fact that our phones are pretty old. I don't remember what Phil said, 12 years or 15 years?
2010.
Oh, 2010, yeah, 10 years old. Yep. So you will probably, uh, likely be seeing, uh, a proposal for that, uh, being redone as well, which is, um, included on that, uh, tenure.
It was on the plan. I know we're right before our last, before we went into these meetings. I know we had a discussion on that. I was confused at whether this was going to be part of it or not. But I didn't read it in there, so I just wanted to make sure it was still being addressed.
Yeah, it would be separate.
Okay.
Okay, the next item, the District Reopening Committee Discussion.
Right, so, um, I, I, I've shared with you at a couple of different occasions that we formed, uh, a committee comprised of staff, school staffs, who will have building principals and directors, uh, and myself and Murray. And then we'll also have, uh, teacher, teaching staff rep or professional staff rep and a support staff rep from each building. School psychologists will be represented, social workers will be represented, um, healthcare professionals, three of them, uh, from the local community here. Uh, representatives from the Public Health Department. Uh, the CEO of Solaris has, uh, agreed to join us. And it ends up being a committee of, uh, I think roughly 70 people. Um, the reason behind that is that I think in order to move through this in a reasonable and appropriate fashion, we have to have, of course, our staff on board and our leaders on board, and then also we need to know what our medical community, and I think Lynchpin, of course, is public health, um, is thinking along these lines. There's ramifications for personnel, and there's ramifications for how we deliver, uh, you know, instruction, transportation, oh, bus companies will be included as well. Um, and our first meeting is scheduled for June 23rd at 9:00 AM. That's accurate, right, Murray? Is that the right date?
Yes.
And the reason that I have it on here is that I'm, I'm wondering if there would like to be board involvement in said committee or board representation. If so, I think it's appropriate to have one or two people. If you feel, no, we'd rather have you bring forward what your plans are, and then we'll talk, we can live with that as well. Uh, but I wanted to provide you the opportunity very clearly when, when our proposal comes forward with how we're going to conduct ourselves. And likely, we'll have a handful of scenarios, right? It'll be, if we can run like normal, here's the things, and when I say normal, trust me, I don't mean 100% normal, but I mean, here's what we can do with in-person school with these, uh, safety measures in place. Uh, here's a hybrid, some in-person and some virtual option, and then here's option three, which is 100% virtual. And there'll be options, uh, you know, or, let's call it, um, varying degrees of things we can do in each of those options. So i- if we were to pare it down, I think the initial conversation at this inaugural meeting on June 23rd will largely be, hey, everybody, thanks for participating. Here's what we know now. Uh, I think it's best that we plan for three very, you know, three scenarios of, of varying degrees. And, oh, by the way, this is all going to be dictated by what the virus decides to do or not do. And frankly, if we have 12 cases like we do now, give or take, and we're holding steady, and that's what it looks like on June 23rd, I mean, to me, that's fairly positive, and we'll probably be planning leaning towards opening with appropriate, um, measures in place. If we start to see a spike, public health may be advising something different. Um, it's also possible that things look good come August, and we start school like normal, and then the wheels fall off, and we gotta do something different come October. So we pretty much have to be planned for every eventuality. But ultimately, the plan will be based on what the local conditions are and to the best of our knowledge at that time. So we are not going to have, from the state level, a mandate or a dictate that says schools shall remain closed. I think that's quite clear. Um, at best, what we're going to get is some guidance from our, uh, local health department. We'll rely on CDC guidance, uh, DPI has guidance. And all of this information at this June 23rd meeting will be shared with, uh, the committee members. And then frankly, I don't believe there's going to be a ton of discussion. We'll, they'll have a key Q and A option. But in June 23rd, there's really not much to talk about. Because we don't really know. We'll know what June 23rd looks like, but what does it look like in July and August? And then, uh, we'll schedule a couple of meetings in July, and then, uh, you know, two or three in July, and then at least one, if not two or three, in, in early August. We have to have our plan, uh, for what we're, you know, intending to do, I would argue, pretty much locked up by the end of the first week of August, or, or maybe worst-case scenario, a little bit into the second week of August. Because remember, we have staff returning, uh, mid-August. We don't know about sports, so whether they're going to start up or not. Football starts pretty much in July. No, I'm kidding, but, um, early August, you know, they, they ramp up sports. So there's a lot of, of questions. But the long and short of that is, is that, um, we're going to be pragmatic and rational with the approach. We're going to lay the ground rules about the fact that this has nothing to do with politics and what Donald Trump or Tony Evers says. This has to do with local conditions, and we'll make our decisions about what's best for, um, our kids and, and our staff at that time. Uh, and if we can operate safely, uh, and our medical professionals and public health and, and community indicators are indicating this is a bad idea, then we're not going to do it. And we're going to have to have a plan in place to, to meet the needs of our kids. Um, and if we can operate, I think the information that I've had access to, that's what most people want to see. Most people want to see, uh, kids back in schools, uh, myself included in that scenario, in a safe capacity. But even still, we'll have to have options for families, like, you know, um, I don't know, it may be into, uh, next year even. I'm not comfortable sending my kid. Okay, so let's figure out how we can meet your needs. So really, that'll be the heart of that conversation. I think it won't be, um, much conversation necessarily in June. I think that conversation will start to take shape as we provide resources and kind of lay the ground rules, as it were. And then as the, the local conditions develop come July and then early August is when we're making our final decisions. So, um, the, the question, I, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to entertain them. And, um, would you think board involvement on said committee is necessary? Or would you prefer that we come up with, uh, plans that are brought forward after the, uh, the process unfolds?
I have two questions.
Yes, Brett.
Uh, first question, is the, um, possibility that if we were to go back to like, normal-ish, whatever, classrooms and the people who weren't comfortable sending their kids, couldn't we just offer them the virtual school option?
Absolutely.
I mean, or do we need to have a different thing for them? Like, does there have to be something completely?
So I think, um, one of the things that's quite critical about, uh, the virtual program, so if you're talking Central Oaks, um, parents still play a fairly significant role in assisting with delivering education to their kids. So that is one option. Another option would be as simple as saying, well, I guess, let me pare it down this way, Katie. If we start school and we're able to start school for the most part normal, let's pretend, all the factors just say, it can be normal. I don't think it's going to be this way, but, but let's pretend that that's the case. Um, there's still going to be a certain percent of the population. I, I, I'm immunosuppressed myself. I have family members that are immunosuppressed, whatever the case may be. And that's true for staff and kids. And so where I think we need to be prepared, do not just say to our parents, well, look, okay, uh, here's a virtual program option that we have for you. But what we do is we change our behavior as far as staff is concerned. So I'm going to start my eight o'clock science class. I'm going to create a Google Meet invite. I'm going to hit, "Join Meeting." The kid's going to be on, and you're going to watch what everybody else is watching, but you're sitting on the computer and all. And we do this for students that are immunocompromised already on a limited basis, or kids that are, um, uh, you know, on homebound instruction because of, uh, an accident or something like that. It's just going to be in a different scale. So one of the things I would say is that we need to be ready to provide educational services to kids, uh, to meet their needs to the best of our ability. And that might look a little different than what this closure looked like. So I think making those plans and having that, uh, that possibility is going to be reality regardless of if the conditions are perfect or if they're even, you know, terrible. So to answer your question, yes, but it may not be just shifting kids to Central Oaks virtual programming. That is an option. But they may, parents might say, well, yeah, I mean, for secondary kids, to be honest with you, and even, uh, you know, third, fourth, and fifth graders. If I know when my kid's supposed to be on that computer, or you tell them when, or blah, 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 and all they gotta do is click, "Join the Meeting," and they're part of your class, that works for me. I can live with that. So that's really, you know, kind of what I'm talking about.
Okay. The other question I have is that these meetings, starting with, uh, June 23rd, are these in-person?
Uh, well, we're going to do, uh, a hybrid there as well. So we, uh, will likely use the east cafeteria. Uh, we'll allow for social distancing to the best of our ability, uh, but people also will have a virtual participation option. So we'll do a Google Meet invite as well. And so, uh, we can accommodate all of the people part of the committee virtually or none. So it'll be based on individual interest. And in fact, there's been replies already that people have said, no. Well, I'm coming, but I'll participate virtually, or I'm coming, and I'll be in person, so.
Are there any board members that wish to participate?
I think your committee's large enough now, without any, without any board members.
Yep.
And I think it puts us in a position where you bring the, the options to us and then let us decide, rather than being involved in it, in my opinion.
I agree.
I agree, Jim.
That's perfectly fine. And I know that, and I appreciate that. I know the committee is large, but I don't believe the majority of our administrators, uh, and directors are really going to be, you know, heavily engaged in conversations aside from saying, well, we can't do that, and here's why. You know what I mean? And so frankly, it's just about that information sharing and ensuring that they're in the loop. And there may be very little even discussion to be had, you know? Uh, again, it's going to dictate what local circumstances are. And if our public health department is saying, you don't do this, why would we do that? But on the same hand, uh, I think that we have to be rational, and I say that because some of the guidelines that we've seen are not plausible. So if someone's saying, you can open, but you have to follow these guidelines, then the answer's going to be, no, we can't do that. So I think we're fooling ourselves if we think we can socially keep, you know, kindergarten socially distanced. I think we're fooling ourselves if we have 1,500 kids at Lincoln High School, and there's some expectation that they stay in one classroom all day long. It's, it can't, it, it's not functional. It's not possible. But can we do things like minimize? Yes, absolutely. Can we not, you know, feed all the kids at one time like we normally do in a cafeteria with, you know, three, four, five, 600 in there? Well, yes, absolutely. I mean, we can figure these things out. Can we, uh, provide masks and other PPE? Can we, uh, encourage frequent hand washing? Yes. So there's things, and shields and so forth. There's absolutely things we can do. And that's why I say operating normal is really not going to happen. But if the response is, you know, look, uh, oh, you're going to do half the kids on Mondays and Wednesdays, and the other half on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then every other, no. Or 12 kids per bus. Number one, we don't have enough buses to run in order to socially distance on buses. What are you going to do? Buy an extra 50 buses and, and hire 50? It's, it's just, these things are not plausible. What's plausible would be to say, hey, parents, you know, we can operate, but we're going to ask you, please, if you can, transport your own kids so that we don't have 70 kids on a bus, and maybe instead of 70, it's 50. But if public health is going, don't put 50, okay, so here you go, right? So as these things, uh, kind of develop, uh, we're, we're going to have to develop our game plan that's, again, rational, pragmatic, and appropriate based on local circumstance. Uh, because I, I'm going to tell you right now, and I'm going to say it in this meeting as well, in the first meeting, and I don't know if people like it or not, but frankly, some of these things we just can't do. And so if that's the advice, or if that's the recommendation, then the response is going to be, we can't run school. And I'm sorry, but you can't, it's, it's just not possible. And, um, I've asked those same questions at the state level, uh, and as long as we're on the topic. And I promise I'm not going to have a tantrum. I'll stay under control. But, um, also simultaneously, what's going on, uh, is all the Wood County superintendents are meeting with public health with regularity. In fact, our first meeting's tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. So we have that in the loop. Wisconsin Valley Conference superintendents are going to meet with regularity over the summer too. Because the other piece that's going to happen is that you're going to see, I think, similarities geographically speaking around how we're engaging, right? So it's not like Rapids is going to be closed, but everybody else is open, or we're doing one thing, everybody else, you know, there's going to be the ability to give you the local nuance and spin. But what is developed and what we do, the, the approach, it's not going to be locked up necessarily, but I, it's going to be sneaking, you know, suspiciously similar, right? And you, you pretty much have to do that. I mean, we do that with snow days, right? You don't see one district closed and all the rest open, or vice versa. Uh, so there's some, there's some cohesiveness there. And I mean, ultimately, what we have to be is, uh, rational and pragmatic and divorce ourselves from the fact that people have chosen to politicize a virus. And I don't think I'd live for the day, and I'm only 46 years old, uh, live for the day when a virus is political in this country. That, it blows my mind. A virus does not care if you're Republican or Democrat. A virus doesn't care what your skin color is, uh, or any of these other pieces. And, and what it is, is protecting, ensuring that our kids are safe. Well, it doesn't impact kids. Okay. Well, for those folks that think it doesn't impact kids, viruses infect human beings, and kids are human beings. But then they become carriers, and kids go places. So if the thing for us is, you know what, bringing these people together is going to exacerbate an already bad, exacerbate an already bad situation, then I don't think we should do that. We also don't know what the ramifications are for kids long-term. There's some of this Kawasaki-type syndrome that's, that's rearing itself, and I think there's a handful of cases. Um, and I'm not one that's comfortable to say, ah, well, ah, whatever, 1%, 2%. What if it's 1% of my kids? I, I don't want it to be 1% of my kids or anybody else's. But that's where I say, it can't be all or not. So if we're talking about, uh, you know, the null hypothesis, meaning either we run no holds barred or we don't, that, that can't be. That can't be part of the conversation, particularly in Wood County. Because again, 12 cases. I mean, all right, so. And if people can, uh, play the game with us, right? And, and we can behave in a manner that we can get through this and implement some things that are rational and, and logical, then gosh, I hope we can run school because everybody wants that to happen, uh, me in particular. Uh, but, um, you know, so i- it's a, it's a, it's a nuanced piece. And, and I, I guess I share that with you because you guys are, you know, listening as well. But in, in reading the guidelines, um, like the DPI guidelines, and I've, I've appealed to every person I can think of to say, did, did you think about the fact that these are not even implementable? I mean, put it in black and white, that's fine, but how, you know? Well, you know, they're, they're just recommendations. You don't really have to follow. Okay.
Then I put them on.
It's, but it's not based on reality. Do you recall? Do you know what a school building looks like? You know what I'm saying? And, and it's disappointing in best. And the reason I share that is because the CDC guidelines, of course, are going to be slanted towards, uh, what the, what the federal government angle and viewpoint on said virus is. slanted towards what the, what the federal government angle and viewpoint on said viruses. And the DPI guidelines are going to be angled towards what the state viewpoint on what the guidelines should be. And then you have what reality lies somewhere in between, right? Because I think it's equally idiotic to think, just go back to normal, everything's fine and whoever dies, dies. That's one option. Or it's also idiotic to say, stay locked in your home until, and do nothing until a vaccine is developed, right? So here we are. And to me, it's mucking around in this center part. And thankfully, our state, as if wisdom has come forward and said, we're not going to provide you really anything as far as, you know, unilateral, here's what you do with schools, we're just going to nod our head and provide you guidelines. So we have to model through it on our own. And frankly, since that is the case and everybody has to do it, to do it with a committee comprised of people that are rational, logical and reasonably intelligent, we talk about what we can and can't do, what is or is not implementable. And then by the time August rolls around, I'm going to say that we'll have probably three options with various different things that we communicate to families. And by that time, we're saying, hey, we think it's option one, which is, we're going to be back in school with these things in place. It's a hot button topic. There's no two ways about it. One of the questions immediately, you know, with the CDC and the DPI guidelines was, are you going to force my kid to wear masks? No, I don't think we're going to force anybody to do anything. I don't think we, we have that luxury, nor do staff members want to fight with kids over whether or not they're wearing a mask. But are we going to infringe upon someone's ability to wear a mask? Absolutely not. Are we going to provide them? Yeah, I think we'll have to on occasion. See what I'm saying? So some of these things, as we work through the process and protocols, we'll develop some kind of a plan. And I do think time is at least in a rudimentary sense on our side. I think some of the things that we're seeing and hearing about, you know, both locally, statewide and nationwide are going to change the numbers potentially, or at least they have the capacity to do so. And if we find that, again, it kind of teeters, it stays kind of calm, I think that tells us one scenario is more likely than the other two. If we see a massive spike and our hospitals are overwhelmed and we have real issues, I think that steers us to yet a different scenario. But we don't know really what that looks like here, you know, early June.
Well, maybe in regards to the meetings, if you could just have us included on email when they're held, I mean.
Absolutely.
People could log in and, you know, participate or witness it if they choose to. Then it's an option. We'd be aware of the times and dates.
Well, what we intend to do as well is record either audio or video or both, as well as have Marine take minutes of said meetings. So that information will be provided to you guaranteed and anybody else that wants it, to be honest with you. So it's not really a committee of, I want to share my personal opinions about what I think you should do. It's a committee of, here's our current circumstances, here's what we can do, should we do it? That's really, you know what I'm saying? So I don't know even if a committee is the right terminology, because when we're sitting down, we're not really going to just say to the committee, barring all other available evidence, what do you think we should do? That's not really what we're talking about. We're saying, given the evidence, how should we behave? You know, and a committee that would be like soliciting viewpoints is, what's the point? I think we already know what this is.
You have to committee, though.
Yes, absolutely.
I think that's really important. I agree.
It's the group to decide.
Right.
What's right for our students.
Right. And in the background, there's also a fairly comprehensive staff survey that we're, it closes Wednesday of this week, June 10th. And there's going to be some decent data from that. And there's been surveys that have been sent out to families and students as well. And I'm not saying that that data is going to be necessarily, it may or may not be relevant to the conversation, but it's yet another set of data that we can reference and relate back to, you know, if necessary, based on whatever plan ends up happening. So, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks for the time event as well.
Yeah.
All right.
As you can tell through the background.
I'm not alone. You're here more than we are. Okay, the last item tonight is the 2020-21 district budget.
Yes, so you have two pages that Dan has prepared and provided for you. The blue one is what will be published as is outlined in statute. You've seen it before. And then the yellow one is the revenue limit worksheet, which you've probably seen multiple times before as well. And so I think this time in particular, and this is one of the things that gives school administrators of that name, superintendents and business managers for sure, and that is because this budget is certain to change. And in this current state of affairs, like the odds of it changing are probably 99%, right? The reason behind that is, is that we have to approve and have a budget published by a certain timelines and we are beholden to those timelines. But what is almost sure to happen is a budget repair bill coming out of the state capital. And if that's the case, then quite clearly, the numbers that you see here before you are going to change. And that, we say that every year because you don't know what your exact state aid amount is going to be until October comes around. You don't know what your people count is going to be until the third Friday, you know, people come. So those, you don't know what property values are. So those are always moving targets, but you always have the ability to provide some kind of a rational projection. And in this case, it's based on said rational projection, but I can almost guarantee that there's going to be a budget repair bill. Now, what are our numbers based on? Our numbers are based on a zero or a flat budget. So no increase from this year to next, 3% increase in insurance, health insurance, and a 2% wage increase. That's what you see in the numbers that are in the proposed 2021 column. That doesn't really mean anything to you because what all you're going to have to compare to is the projected 1920 budget, if you know what I'm saying? But you can see as those stack up. If it is a zero budget and we have a 3% increase in insurance and a 2% wage increase, both of those things are unknown at this time, it would be a balanced budget. But the reason it's balanced is because of the dollars in Fund 46, which we talked about already tonight. Some of that money would be taken up or out of our facilities or Fund 10 budget and spent out of Fund 46. That's why it's there. It's just that we might be spending it a little quicker than we originally anticipated. And then also, 795,000, give or take in CARES Act or what are now called ESER grant dollars, which are part of the, you know, federal stabilization knowledge to public education and other entities. So that's why you see a balanced budget here before you. What we're hearing at the state level is, oh, and very quick, currently our mill rates are 10.4. This projected budget that you see proposed is just shy of a nine. So you're not talking about a mill, give or take change as far as the local tax levy is concerned. And so you're not talking about a wild swing here. That's of course, if it's a zero budget. If it would have been the budget that we were anticipating, then I would argue you're probably looking at more like a nine, five, or maybe even closer to a 10, because there was going to be some additional revenue cap authority, but we're taking that off the table. There is a possibility that not only do we have no increase, but we also have a decrease because of a budget repair bill. There's estimates that the state has to potentially backfill $2 to $3 billion in revenue shortfall as they conclude the fiscal year and head into next, clearly all as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Troy mentioned to you that there's some potential for congressional action at the federal level that may relieve some of that and offset some of the shortfall that the state has because as I think Senator McConnell mentioned, if you tie it to a shortfall as a result of decreased revenue due to the pandemic, then you may be eligible for this next package, but they haven't even started work on that package yet. That would temper our state circumstance and then by virtue of that, we may not be hit quite as hard. But every, if we're looking to backfill a $2, $3 billion deficit, every state organization and state funded program is going to get hit. And then the trick is to what degree? And so, and then how is that going to be passed along? So there's a couple of different questions. And so in talking with Dan, I think we're on safe footing because it is June. I'm telling you right now, the budget's going to change. I'd be stunned if it doesn't. In fact, if it doesn't, we're in a good spot. Let's just put it that way. We're in an okay spot. I shouldn't say even good, we're okay. But there's a possibility of a $50 per people decrease, $100 per people decrease, or even a $200 per people decrease. When pressed, our lobbyist, John Forster, you've probably heard him on a couple of occasions for the School Administrators Alliance, WASB is saying similar things. Could it be more than 200 per people? Yeah, yeah, it could be. Because it is a fairly significant deficit. Now, is that going to be all based on just public schools? No. But public schools do get a fairly decent slice of the state revenue pie when it comes to, you know, how funding is broken up. So how do I think it's going to come? I think it's going to come in terms of per pupil aid, because if you recall the last handful of budget cycles, rather than revenue cap authority, the state has opted for per pupil payments, which just don't make the payment or take the money away out of your state aid pot. And if it's in this categorical per pupil aid, you can run the calculations with your own calculator. Take 200 times 5,100 students, give or take, is $1.1 million. $100, 500 plus, 550,000. $50, you see what I'm saying? So running these scenarios are really not that complicated. If it comes out of the revenue cap, which I don't think it would come out of the revenue cap, then you're talking about arriving at a different number because keep in mind that a revenue cap reduction has impact on your aid and your local levy authority. But I mean, if they reduce it via a certain dollar amount per pupil out of the revenue cap, it's spread in a different capacity. I don't see that on the horizon. I see that as a categorical aid reduction, just because it's money I don't have to pay to you, therefore it's money that I've saved. See what I'm saying? So we don't really know. And this is similar to, I think Marine and I talked about it, if you recall, like the, I think it was the 11, 12 school year, where we didn't have a budget from the state until, I want to say it was October. And in fact, you got your certified state aid amount like the day after they decided on the budget. And that's statutorily set, like by October 15th, you have to get your certified state aid amount. And I think we got the budget the week before, two days ago. It was crazy, crazy, crazy. I'm anticipating that's going to be the case. I don't know if it'll be October, but clearly they're going to have to do a budget repair bill when, where are you? And it's June and we are having our budget hearing a couple of weeks from tonight because we have to follow the statutory timelines. So it's always subject to change, clearly, but I think this time around it's going to. And like I said, best case scenario is a zero budget and good numbers on our insurance renewal. You'll be happy to hear that as it stands right now, we are seeing decent numbers as far as our insurance renewal is concerned, but we're very early in that renewal process. Keep in mind, we just transitioned to security health plan in January. And so numbers are advantageous. I think our launch ratio is 68% or something like that. Really good, 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 good. Like, yeah, good.
10 years.
Yeah. But it's in the first three months, right? Of, and there's always, yeah, so like as they're paying claims, it's always, there's that catch up from the prior policy and I'd be lying to you if I really told you, if I knew, like I really knew it worked, but there's always a lag. And then because of, I asked too, so, oh, we're going to get hosed because of COVID. Well, potentially the contrary, because the pandemic had the unintended impact of kind of tamping down people seeking healthcare. They didn't want to go. You know, I don't want to go to the hospital, I'm going to get COVID-19. So we'll see how these things kind of stack up, but that's advantageous. So I think the 3% might actually be pretty decent. Some people would laugh and go, 3% insurance increase, you're out of your mind. It could be zero. And I told our, our agent, if that was the case, that, you know, we would have a little private celebration, because in 10 years as a superintendent, I think I've had a zero increase in insurance premiums, but 3%, he's saying is probably a decent number. And then of course, the wage increase that we talked about, that doesn't have to happen. This is something that we can still talk about. It's something that I would argue is on the table as we see what happens. And thankfully, the district had the wherewithal, I think it was three years ago, give or take, three and a half to place dollars into Fund 46 for deferred maintenance.
Five.
Five years ago, thank you. Yeah, because it's a five-year timeline before you can access those. To place dollars over time into Fund 46, which we, the district has done, that will help offset what this issue is going to cause.